Please rise. I'll call the meeting of the Riverside Township Board to order. And please, Trustee Luffler, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you just pause for a moment. We're within a week of the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, and I'd just like us to all reflect and thank those who were willing to give all. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
President.
Trustee Drapka?
President, in a counter floor.
Trustee Hollenbach?
President.
Trustee Luffler?
Here.
Supervisor Wilt?
Here.
Let the record note, Clerk Blau's in attendance.
Thank you. We have before us in our packets the minutes of the May 14th Board of Trustees meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the May 14th, 2019 meeting.
I have a correction, minor correction.
Can you, you want a second and then make a correction?
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second up for discussion.
On page three, lean, under number eight, Riverside Township Lions Club. I believe it's the 150th anniversary of the Almstead Plan, not the Village of Riverside. And that's the only correction.
So noted. Are there any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected of the meeting of May 14th. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. You also have the minutes of our Committee of the Whole meeting from June 4th. What is your pleasure? Motion by Trustee Clark.
I second.
And seconded by Trustee Drapka. Is there any discussion, any additions or corrections?
I have one. The barbecue cook-off, I thought that was going to be part of the 150th anniversary in the fall.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The third from the bottom bullet point on the 125th anniversary belongs in the other. Our discussions were so all over the place that it was hard to figure what that should be for the fall celebration.
Change it, thank you. Trustee Luffler?
Are there any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor with the correction as noted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.
For the record, Supervisor Wilt, I was not in attendance, so I'll abstain of taking a vote on that.
Thank you. Alrighty, on to, do we have any communications?
Just one moment, I can't.
Sure, no problem.
We have a letter of thank you for the donation toward, oh, I'm sorry, we have a notice from the Riverside Juniors stating that they have made a $900 donation to the food pantry.
Very happily accepted.
We have a thank you note from Troop 51-401 thanking for letting us use Room 104 for their book sale. They appreciate all of our support. A thank you note from American Keenster Society for our contribution and sponsorship for their Relay for Life of West Cook County. A thank you note from Riverside Arts Weekend RAW for their, our donation and the support of their last weekend, or was it two weekends ago, their art exhibit. A thank you note from Best Buddies for our sponsorship for $2,500. And another thank you note from the Foundation for Brookfield Library, thanking for the gift that we donated on behalf of Richard Tusher.
I think the Best Buddies chapter got an award for the best new chapter, so.
Yes, they got the best, the Rookie of the Year Award, so. And besides that, our, our donation has helped make possible that next year there will also be a chapter at Central. So they're going, they started with the high school, they're at the junior high, and now they're going into the elementary schools.
So Hauser got the award?
Hauser got the award as the best new chapter.
Yeah, great.
In the state, right. Excellent. Okay, thank you very much for those communications, none need any action. If you, there should be agendas by the door. If you have any remarks as visitors that are not on the agenda, this would be a great time. Does the, does anybody have any remarks that are not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. We'll hear from our assessor then.
Thank you. My name is Fran Cipriots, and I am here as, in my capacity as Riverside Township Assessor. I just want to make a report of what's been happening, what to expect the next couple of months as far as the assessor's office is concerned. We are off to a very robust spring real estate market, which means that we have a pretty good inventory of homes on the market, which means that we are receiving a lot of phone calls from militars and potential buyers about property taxes and potential property taxes. So that's keeping us pretty busy right now. Second installment, 2018 property tax bills are scheduled to be mailed by June 30th from the Cook County Treasurer's Office. And the Board of Review is changing the beginning of its appeal season this year. They are starting Riverside Township as the first township to go through the appeal season in July. In the past, it's been August, so we got that call today, so we're on, we're going to be on a rapid get-together of an organization a couple of weeks before they open our township for appeals with the Board of Review. So expect a busy July around here, because we will be getting people coming in with their property tax bills that might need to be corrected and also appeals. So might as well get it all done at one time, right? Also, I just wanted to make sure you knew that I will be available on Saturday if I can help with Riverside Township, or with Township Day on Saturday.
Thank you, thank you. We look forward to having you.
Fran, how's the demolition going in Riverside, huh?
We do, there are, well demolition is kind of at a standstill right now. I think they've torn down everything that they've purchased so far. I did receive an email from Rob Rose, I haven't heard from him in a couple, about a year at least, and they're at the end of the time period that FEMA gave them to finish the project there. So they do have a couple of offers still outstanding, so they're going to encourage those people to make a decision, and then they're going to wrap it up within the next couple of months. So I suspect they're going to want to have a public meeting here at some point in time. He sent me that email, I sent him an email back and told him, let me know what dates he was interested in, so I could check to see the availability of the town hall, and I haven't heard from him, so. But I do expect that to be wrapping up soon.
And when will the land be transferred to the forest?
So the land won't be transferred to the forest preserve until all the properties purchased by the Cook County Land Bank. And then once they have all the property purchased and all the, the buildings torn down, then they will start the transfer to the forest preserve.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thanks for all you do, Fran.
You're welcome. Thank you. By the way, if you were not able to find a, an agenda, if you're here about a grant, you're on the agenda. So if there, if there's anything else that anybody needs to bring to our attention, the floor is open. Hearing nothing, we will move on to unfinished business. And the first orders on that are the grants. And first, we will take the Riverside Chamber of Commerce Cruise Night Shows. Because the application had wrong dates, this has been corrected, they brought in the flyer as soon as we notified them that there was a hesitation, so the correct dates should be on your copies now, June 20th, July 18th, August 15th, and the car show on September 29th.
I think I was going to have to approve this grant.
I second.
So that is for $1,835, correct? Okay, I have a motion and a second to award the grant to the Riverside Chamber of Commerce for Cruise Night Shows and that actually being some of the facilities for those events. And is there any, are there any other questions or discussion?
I have one.
Yes.
Event sponsors, are we going to be a sponsor at the bottom of our flyer here? Are we going to be considered a sponsor for this?
We usually get signage at the events.
Works for me, okay.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Hearing none, then this is an expenditure, so would the clerk please call the roll on this?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffler?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next order of business is the grant for the North Riverside Golden Ager's. We have been provided with a lot more financial information. You have the statement, one of the staff at North Riverside in the, in the village offices provided us all of these records. You see that they, we have their flyer, their announcement of their officers, their contact information. We have a list of people who participated in events, and there, you see it noted there, which of those were Golden Ager's and received money in return. We see some receipts for their expenditures. And I see that we have some folks here, some of the officers here. If you have any questions for them.
I do.
It's Trustee.
The checks are into cash. As a small businessman, cash always concerns me. Do we know what that's going for?
Some of the checks that are listed are made out to cash.
Right.
Do you have an explanation?
Yes, the explanation should be in the memo.
Well, there's.
Usually for the desserts. They are paid with someone else's visa, so you made the check out to that person, you make it out to cash.
I do see one that's for $525, that's nothing in the memo. And then I have one for $645.39 that was made out to no one.
Maybe it's no one.
There's no, no payee on the payee line.
No payee.
That would have been from December, could that have been Christmas Party Matters? That you didn't know who it was?
The motion says Bennys, it's, it's not.
Sperrys?
No.
Bennys?
You don't want.
It might have been Bennys.
Bennys to be found, even for the law of the Christmas party. That's what that means. Why, she said she had a stamp, why didn't she stamp it?
I don't know, why did they cash it?
I don't know, it's West Town's problem.
Unless it didn't come through, if she stamped it and didn't come through. Oh, and it does not have a memo on it.
By the date, I'm thinking that that has something to do with a Christmas party. Where was your Christmas party?
Yes, to make a deposit for the Christmas party. That's PR's.
Okay.
Yes, on Harlem Avenue.
Well, it's cash, because it's stated that it was.
The stamp, gee, I don't know why the stamp didn't go through. It's to learn how to do that again, we didn't write it out. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? What is your pleasure with this grant application?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
$5,000 for the North Riverside Golden Ager's.
Yeah, I second that.
I have a $5,000, a motion for a $5,000 grant to the North Riverside Golden Ager's and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Luffler?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. On to the Riverside Brookfield High School grant request. You're welcome, ladies. Okay, Riverside Brookfield High School, is there anyone to speak to it here? Because we did have, I don't think we have any additional information, however, there were some questions last month that we couldn't satisfy without anybody here. So we have a couple of gentlemen here that can explain a little bit about what we are looking for. By the way, Trustee Luffler did ask that I go through and try to plump together, and of course, I made that list and now I can't find it, but we have not made any, any grants lately to, for anything at the high school. It's been, it's been quite a while.
I am Lee Neiman, I'm the school liaison officer, this is Dean Neil DeGuetti.
For the cameras, could you step a little behind the podium so that we, you're on TV tonight?
All right. Like I said, I'm Lee Neiman, I'm a school liaison officer.
Neil DeGuetti, Dean of Students at Riverside Brookfield High School.
Okay. There were some questions last month, or would you like to give us a synopsis of what the, the whole goal is with this grant?
Sure, ultimately, we are looking towards ensuring more safety at our school, which is a few different things. When you look at the list, there's things I deal with, like, we do a lot of drop-off and pickup and, with our students and community members, and so we wanted to ensure some more safeguards with, in terms of drop-off and safeguard, and picking up students with some of the cones and barricades and things that kind of make things more clearly defined for students and parents when they're, they're picking up their kids. Sometimes it gets a little hairy over there with everybody coming through, so we really want to make that area better for everybody included. We put a few things in there additionally, not just for pickup and drop-offs, barricades. We put additional like bullhorns. We do a lot of drills, like, for example, like fire drills, where we exit from different areas of our school, and we want to re-enter the building, it's usually us just kind of, you know, bellowing out to the, ah, come back in. So instead of us doing that, we're to make it have a bullhorn, so we can announce things to the students that would be a little bit easier to hear from. A couple of other things is, we requested AED machines, I think it was two that was on the list. Obviously, our school's a large building, and the more that we can have to ensure that in case there's an emergency, we can get to instead of us trying to scurry throughout the building to locate it. So we want to have two additional, I think it was, I think we put two additional AED machines. And then one of the other areas that we wanted to have is, we use this, this program, it's called HERO. And what HERO does is allows us to address attendance for students when they come into the building, so we know that they're here. What we have now is we have an older version of, we use the iPods, that they're, they're outdated. And so what this is, we're asking for is a way to get a more updated iPod, so that when students come in, we can identify their attendance quicker. And that way, what happens is when they enter the building, we print out a little pass for them to get into their classes. This way, if they aren't in attendance, we can notify the parents that they're not in attendance, and if they are arriving late, we can get it to them sooner. We have our security members who carry these with them, but as technology changes, and when we use our HERO program, when they do the updates, if the iPod isn't compatible with the updates, it runs very slowly. So this is a way to just ensure our entire building, you know, safeguards with our students and our parents, with just any of their patrons going in and out. We have guests that come in our building all the time, and then if there's an event where we have to exit our building, we want to make sure we can communicate to the students or to the teachers or whoever's in our building, we're not just yelling out at the top of our voices.
So the eye touches are, from best attendance, eye touches are for you to record who's there?
Correct.
And when students leave and parents come in, and then even students in the hallway, we can document what they're doing there and stuff like that. And like I said, the version they currently have, I've only been there two years, but these are some of the safety issues they hired me for to kind of bring up. So when I was going through these, there's a lot of the issues that I have found that maybe they weren't budgeted for, but I feel that should be addressed as soon as possible. And myself and the deans and the assistant principal and principal work very closely, and this is the list we came up with, that I think would enhance the safety at Riverside Brookfield greatly.
How many AED machines do you have now, currently?
Currently, yeah, I think five.
And you want to put these in, you have locations for them already?
We will, we're going to, what we'll do is if we can get these, we're going to take a look at all of the, where they're at now and see if we can put them in different areas.
We have them by the gyms now, and each side of the gym, and as you know, it's two, two levels there. We don't have one at all on the bottom, the basement level, and there's a wrestling gym down there, a weightlifting room, and stuff like that. So that would definitely be one of the areas we would like to address immediately.
Right, isn't it the pit?
Yeah, the pit. Obviously, obviously, had students who were there, you know.
Yeah, so, but that's what we want to do, we want to look at that and see whether else we can find an area that it needs to be, that our school's drawing.
My concern is, and you did sign off on the second page where you understand that because you're another taxing body, we can't make a grant directly to you, that we would need to purchase these items, so we would work with us so that we can, we can do that, we can either, you know, put down our credit card to do that, or however works best for you.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
But where you could, you know, or invoice and we'd have to pay to the vendors rather than to the school.
We are fully fine with that.
I make a motion, we approve this grant.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Drapka, to approve the grant to Riverside Brookfield High School for safety. Any other discussion?
Just one quick comment. You know, this is a lot of money here, and we need somebody here to answer these questions, because we had no idea what the iPads were for.
Sure.
You know.
Anytime.
No, that was a miscommunication, I guess, but we understand now.
Please, please, come, come so we can answer these and then we don't have to go through this again, okay?
Anytime, thank you so much.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll, so if the clerk would please call the roll to approve this?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffler?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming in.
Well, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, that's another one down. Next one. I don't see any, is anyone here for the Lions Club? Okay, so that one, we, and we did not get any additional information, so we gave that opportunity, but that has passed. Okay, so our next grant, would, grant application is to Boy Scouts of America, Pathway to Adventure Council. You have some additional information that Tim Strudeman provided to us, and that is in your packets. Now, are there any questions?
How is it structured? I'm sorry?
How is it structured?
Yeah, I mean, it's still going to the, to the main organization. How has this been tweaked?
Right, so I, what I've done is, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and for having, allowing us to come back and revisit this discussion. So what I've done is tried to quantify what level of success the scouts are having in the township already. And the point to make as it relates to that is that this is a general grant, or grant to the general fund, but there is, in our budget, and I reflected sort of our summary budget, but in our budget, there are line items specific to activities, events, support that we deliver for the scouts in this community. So, and I've reflected that in some of the details, the campere, the first aid meet, the polar pile, pondite derby, some of the trainings that we do, et cetera. So I want to surface that it is the case that we are working in a community, in a community manner to support the units here in that way, by providing activities. Certainly scouting takes place at the unit level, but it also takes place in a, in a community, a broad community around, throughout the area. Also brought one of your local scouters to join me, his name is on the, on the document that I provided, Mr. John Flaherty. John is involved in Troop 24 and has a good visibility into the scouting that takes place here in your community. So if there's, if there's the opportunity, maybe you could say a few words.
Perhaps from your viewpoint, you could tell us how the money that we would put to the central office affects your, your activities or your, your scouts.
Sure. Well, thank you again. My name is John Flaherty. I'm a Riverside resident, living here about 18 years now. Been involved with Troop 24, was chartered from the Riverside Presbyterian Church. Been involved with that organization for about 10 years. As I'm sure many of you know, that Troop 24 has been in existence for over 101 years. We've, we've, we have currently about 50 boys in the troop. We also have an associated pack. I think you know that St. Mary's has got both a troop and a pack, as well as Mater Christi has a pack as well. We have about, like I said, 50 boys in our troop. They range from, you know, fifth grade on up through seniors in high school. And I've been privileged enough to mentor and support these, these boys. Currently, the boys were, we've opened it as well to opening a girls' troop. We're working on that initiative currently as well. But I've had the privilege of working with, with these boys and seeing how they grow and, and prosper. And a lot of our boys have gone on now, at least the boys that I've seen in the last 10 years. We have policemen, ones in the fire service, we have boys that have gone into the military. A lot of them have, have come back to the community and are living here in the community. But what I think the, the primary thing that I've seen with, with our troop is that the boys and their involvement in the community. One of the threads that we stress a lot is community involvement and community service through that. In fact, now, to achieve each rank advancement in the Boy Scout program, you have to provide community service. Starting at one hour for the first rank, all the way up to our Eagle Scouts that have to do the Eagle projects. I'm sure if you've lived here, you've seen of our Eagle projects. There have been numerous projects that have benefited the Riverside community. Scout cabin is a favorite of mine. My son actually stripped and restained the entire cabin. The fire pit is, is one of our Eagle projects over there. There's a sign talking about the, the trees, they did an inventory of the trees. Our newest project is a sign down at where the Hoffman Dam was, given some explanation and history of, of the Hoffman Dam. So we've seen a lot of it. The high school has been a big recipient of some of our Eagle projects, the band program there. We totally tore down their band trailer and rebuilt it. There's a cabinet outside the band room now that was built by an Eagle scout that housed their history of uniforms. If you've ever gone to the band concerts, all the band stands that they place their music on, that was an Eagle project. The, the butterfly garden behind the, the library is an Eagle project. There's a couple over at Patriot Park was an Eagle project that they just finished a couple of weeks ago. So you've seen, you know, what the boys have done here, but I think for, for our standpoint, it instills in them this duty to give back to the community, and that's what we try to instill in our, our boys, is what's important. You've seen, if you ever, if you've been to the Riverside Memorial Day Program, that's Troop 24 that does the color guard. We do color guards for the Veterans Day Program at Hauser, the Fourth of July Raising at our party on, on July 3rd, rather. We've also been over at Godart Hall to do programs over there for the veterans. we've also been over at Goddard Hall to do, uh, programs over there for the veterans. So, this is what we try to do to instill in our boys and our scouts.
You call them boys.
Part of the old crew. Our, our scouts to, you know, give back to the community, and that's what I've been privileged to see as, as these boys and these scouts grow and mature. So, um, the benefit that, you know, obviously, our, our unit is, are, are local units, but we rely heavily upon the council. They provide all the support for us, the training, the training to become leaders like myself. I was, uh, scout master in the troop for three years. I'm currently assistant scout master. Uh, they provide us with numerous amounts of training that we go through to become, uh, mentors for these, for the scouts, and, uh, to be able to support them, to provide them with the scouting program. Uh, the programs that they provide at the, um, the summer camps that we go to are just fantastic, and the training for those young people to provide that, as well as the properties and the programs, the different activities that, that they provide. The, my favorite one is the Klondike Derby, which is a winter program. It usually happens in February over in Bemis Woods, and I'm proud to say that, uh, several of my crews were champions of that. There's a traveling trophy that goes around, and so we've got pictures that we've, uh, we've had that traveling trophy at Troop Twenty Four on several occasions in my tenure. So, um, that's just some of the stuff that, that we do at Troop Twenty Four. That's the benefit of the scouting, uh, organization, and the council is instrumental in, in providing that, and, like I said, the response and, and the, uh, opportunities that the boys have to give back to the community. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, the way we, I mean, the scout projects, the Eagle Scout projects, all the stuff that you mentioned is what we want to support. And I would feel, personally, and I can't speak to us to the board, much better if our local troops were asking for the grant and would be, almost being reimbursed. So, if an Eagle Scout had a project, they needed to raise some funds, you could get reimbursed for that. If you had a camper who couldn't afford to go to the summer camps, you could s- put in a scholarship for that. So, it'd almost be like, um, you guys, if you're having meetings at Scout Cabin and paying your fifty dollars, you get reimbursed for your fifty dollars Scout Cabin. I mean, I'm, I really want it to be very locally driven. I mean, I don't, we, I don't feel comfortable giving money that's gonna go to a, a regional, um, organization. I mean, we're a Riverside Township, we're not Creek County. Um, so, the structure, and that's what I've been talking about, is if the local troops would say, here's three thousand dollars in expenses that we foresee having, and would then be reimbursed from the, the regional council, that would be the structure that I'd be much more comfortable with. That way, we're sure that the Eagle Scouts of Town are getting funded. You know, we're sure that the, the underprivileged Riverside residents are getting to go to summer camps. So, um, for me, I really, really need to see that structured that way, instead of just giving the money to a group and having, whether we gave you this grant or not, you would still have the support from the regional council, regardless of the grant. So, that's the disconnect to me, is you're saying you get a lot from the council, but that's what they do. I mean, they give that to everybody. So, why is Riverside Township giving you a grant and not every single township? So, I mean, I really need to see it come bottom up. I need to see it, uh, be structured in such a way that it would directly benefit our scouts in Troop Twenty Four and the one over in, um, Saint Mary's.
Tim, I have a more question. Um, of this, of this money, do you, do you, you can answer this also, does that cover a lot of your expenses for the local troops that, do you understand where I'm going with that?
So, in other words, would it be, you know, three thousand dollars equates to what the expenses are for the local units?
Right.
Uh, it, it, it would support much of, if not all, or, uh, yeah, if, if almost all of what we would do in the way of programming, training, uh, recruitment, or, or, uh, unit development. Yes.
And Mr. Fletcher, could you back that up a little?
Sure. Flaherty, that's, um...
Flaherty, sorry.
I'm not sure, that's okay. Um, so, the expenses of the troop, in other words, are, you know, we provide, our troop has tents, camping gear, stoves, you know, that kind of stuff. That's all provided with fundraising we do. If, if you've ever been to our pancake breakfast, you know, it seems to be the kickoff of the, of the year in March. That's where our money comes from to, to do that. What we rely on the council for is all the training that we get as leaders is free. Uh, you know, the, the camperships, we've had several boys apply and receive camperships to go to, to go to camps. Uh, this year, we've, uh, sent two of our boys to, uh, a, a program called NYLT, National Youth Leadership Training. That was done on the, on the, uh, by the council. Um, and that's just another, uh, step up in the leadership. So, that, we rely a lot on the council to provide without charging us for. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. You know, to both of your points. The idea is that the, 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 the Pathway to Adventure Council is a collective, and we deliver these, uh, opportunities, these programs in whole, uh, and, and we make them available and support and ask, uh, unit leaders and, and the units to participate, whether it's in the training, whether it's in the activities, whether it's in our efforts to support them in unit development. Uh, and I'll be doing that regardless, to your point, regardless, I'll be working with the superintendents and the principals and the schools and the units to support their, uh, um, further involvement in the community, further, more importantly, uh, the, the, the support, uh, to get kids to join and participate in the scouting, to be able to realize the mission of scouting.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. So, um, if we give the Pathway Council the three thousand dollars, do they go ahead and turn around tomorrow then and write you a check for three thousand dollars?
No.
Or, or more, more, let me, let me rephrase that. What about if we don't give them the money, how will that impact you and Riverside Township Scouts?
So, they don't give us funding?
If we don't, if we don't approve the grant, how will that impact you guys?
Well, it affects their budget in order to provide us, like, the programs that I've talked about, the training, the, the, the camp opportunities, the campership opportunities that our boys have, have taken advantage of. Um, it just, it affects their bottom line and, and the, the breadth of what they can offer.
So, then do you...
Is there a dollar for dollar?
Yeah.
No. I mean, they don't write us checks.
Would you feel that, um, your budget will be impacted in a negative way then if we wouldn't approve the grant?
At Troop Twenty Four?
Yeah.
No, not, not our budget at our troop.
What about, like, resources that are available for you?
Yeah, I mean, we lose the opportunity to take on a training because they have, they don't have someone to provide the training, or, or a location to provide a training. Uh, that would, obviously, would impact us. But, can I tell you, that's, you know, this training is not gonna happen because we didn't get three, or they didn't get three thousand dollars. No. But, it, it's definitely impacts their ability to provide us the support that we need to provide the programs that we do, and allow the boys to participate in the campership, well, the campership programs, allow them to provide the, the camps that we can go to.
So, there is some direct funding back through the scholarships and the camperships?
That's correct. Yes.
So, this, this scenario kind of plays out. We, we sponsor local sports teams. So, we would give a grant to a, the local Pop Warner affiliate to buy their uniforms. We wouldn't give a grant to Pop Warner. Uh, and we'd say, well, what's Pop Warner doing for us? Well, we provide you with referees. Well, they kind of would do that anyway. So, I, it's, there's a disconnect between giving you guys three thousand dollars and you guys operating as a pack in town and our, in our boundaries. So, I'm just, I think we're, you're looking at it the other way. I'd like to see it switched.
Do other townships give you grants, like Lions and the other ones?
Uh, there are instances where other, um, entities give us grants, whether it's the Rotary or other townships.
All right. Well, I, I'd make a motion that we approve the grant, although with the KPI, I'd like to see maybe next year, um, or in the future, I mean, you still have time this year, for, you know, Pack Twenty Four or the other, the other pack here, I'm sorry, I'm in a steeze, but for you to come and apply for your own grant, that way, you know, we know that we're going right to you guys at Twenty Four. You know what I mean?
No. Well, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely discussed.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to grant three thousand dollars to the Pathway to Adventure Council, um, toward local scouting. Any further discussion? Then Clerk Law, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffler?
No.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thanks for coming back.
Well, thank you.
Hey, Laura, your information was very, very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So, on to the next order of unfinished business, and that would be planning for the township anniversaries. We, uh, we discussed in our committee of the whole that, um, we're probably going to need some help with this, and so we have the good fortune of having, um, Chris Combs and Lisa...
Me too.
Ripson, thank you, that's the name of the company, uh, here with us tonight. So, if any of you have any questions for them, but first I'd ask them to, to give us a little synopsis. I've tried to bring them up to date on the kinds of things that we're looking to do, and, um, so, the show's yours.
Sure, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Chris Combs, um, and I'm the president of Ripson Group.
And I'm Lisa Ripson. I'm the CEO and principal of the Ripson Group.
And, uh, we, uh, cover primarily, uh, media relations, uh, marketing and video production. Our, uh, office is located in the West Loop, and I'm a native of nearby La Grange. Uh, so, we're happy to be here tonight. Um, and, uh, you know, one of the key things for the anniversary, we had a conversation, uh, just last week actually, by phone, um, and, uh, talked about, uh, some of the activities you're looking to do for the hundred and fiftieth to commemorate the celebration, uh, be it a year-long celebration or be it just a couple of events. Uh, one of the things, um, that we, uh, wanna see if we can narrow down is, uh, kind of the full scope of, of what you want to do to celebrate. Um, Lisa, if you wanna talk a little bit about, uh, some of the, some of the things that we can do?
Well, some of it, just to, just to take, take a, a quick step back on, like, a little bit of our background. I don't know how much you've had a chance to take a peek at what we do, but, um, primarily, we do public relations and media relations. We do a lot of event planning, event support, and, um, telling people stories. My, uh, background is, I was a television news producer at NBC in Chicago for a little over, uh, ten years, and before that in smaller markets. And for eleven years now, I've, we've had Ripson, uh, the Ripson Group, and we've helped businesses tell their stories, small and medium, midsize to large, as well as, um, we worked with the village and many chambers of commerce to get their stories out and help them boost, uh, their businesses, whether it be their bottom lines or getting people involved in their events and bringing them the attention, whether it's through media relations, is, you know, having WGN TV come out for your, um, the, the cornerstone, uh, event, or, you know, having all of the, the media out here. Depends on what your goals are, you know, what you guys want to do. So, what we'd like to kind of, we, we heard some things and we saw a little bit about what you were thinking about the kind of the year-long celebration. I understand it was maybe gonna thought to be first two events, maybe one in this fall and then one next fall. Uh, but perhaps you wanted to maybe sprinkle in throughout the year to make it a bigger celebration, which I think is fantastic. Um, so, I, we just kind of want to narrow down on what you think your scope might be, if you want us to, uh, put together a proposal for you so that we, um, can, you know, meet your goals and, you know, put together, put it to a budget and, and everything, so you guys know what we can do. We do sponsorships, we do event strategy, we do execution, we do the media relations, we can do all of that. Um, but we just really kind of want to hear from you what you want to see, and then we can also throw in some ideas in the, in our proposal, uh, to spice up things up and, and give you some idea of what we can maybe do. But we want to get an idea from you guys, what it is that you'd like to see, how you want to celebrate this hundred and fiftieth and hundred and twenty-fifth.
So, Scott, you, you go out and give sponsorships as well?
We do. Yep, yep, we're absolutely, uh, have a lot of experience doing that for a number of organizations and festivals throughout, uh, the suburbs and Chicago.
Well, let me ask you this, how much are you looking at, like, what's your, what's your ballpark figure for, you know, charging stuff?
Well, it depends on what, I mean, like, if you want to go for the, like, I need to, we kind of want to decide what you are gonna be doing. So, before I can say, it's gonna cost this.
Here's, here's where I'm at. I guess I'd love to take this to our committee of the whole meeting, and if, you know, if, that's why I was trying to get a, like, a bottom line, because if, you know, it's not bad, I would, uh, uh, I would be in favor of letting the supervisor work out some minor details and then bring this back to the, uh, committee of the whole meeting so that we can have a more in-depth conversation.
So, real quick, there, you, you kind of would offer an a la carte kind of services where, okay, for you had sponsorships is this much, and then full media relations is that, and then the event sponsorship. So, it all depends on what we're thrown into the bag, right?
Kind of, yeah, it, it does. I mean, we can, we could kind of ballpark it for you a little bit, but, you know, that depends, like, if we are gonna, if we're gonna include fireworks in this, we kind of already know that a smaller fireworks celebration is ten thousand dollars, or at least it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Um, and that, we just did something, um, at Misswood Country Club, when they opened their clubhouse, and it was ten thousand dollars. Um, it was great, but that's, that's one line, line item, right? You know, is it the printing and the, you know, I don't know how much, you know, all of that material is the hard cost for materials and the, and the video production and all of that. Those are separate, like, would be separate line items. We don't have to do all of those things, we can do all of those things, we can price them.
So, you help us budget for the events?
Absolutely. I'll be budget for the event.
Supes to nuts.
Supes to nuts.
Supes to nuts.
Yeah.
All, and all in cost, we can, absolutely.
Because you're looking at five of those nuts right here.
Where's the soup? You're all the soup.
You're the soup.
Uh, I think, and you guys can work if I rock, uh, if I'm, you know, in work in this, uh, but just to clarify for you, um, our hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, anniversary of this building...
Correct.
Is what we want to have a, kind of a ceremony for, uh, in November.
Okay.
And where we remove the vaults.
The cornerstone.
The cornerstone. And then, starting in two thousand twenty, that's the hundred and fiftieth anniversary...
Of the township.
Of the township. And that's when we wanted for, uh, three or four different things. Um, but the main one, I, you know, um, we may need help publicizing if we get, you know, a good guest speaker. Um, but the main thing is the thing that we wanted in September, which was, uh, two or three bands, and then Mike wants fireworks, and...
Festival, festival atmosphere.
A festival, a festival.
And that's, and that's when the idea would be to extract the...
Uh, that would be, yeah, that's a November. Open it.
Open it, and then it's on display for a year.
And then, uh, right, we're gonna open it?
Well, so, the opening would be now in November, with a more of a formal ceremony, and then maybe a light reception.
So, we'd take it out, leave it there, build the anticipation, and then open it?
People decide.
By the way, we do have evidence that there's something there.
We like this. We're not gonna hold the roll though.
And then, also, in that September day, we want to refill it, right, and put it back in?
And the end, yes, then we would want a new time capsule to go in at that point.
And then, and in the, with, then we want to maybe have contests with the schools to see what to put in there.
Which I think those are all great ideas. I, as a former TV producer, I just, I think this is a lot of good television, good, you know, good storytelling, and also, because we want to make sure we're not just telling that story, we want to continue to tell the sto- your stories of Riverside and what you guys, what you were doing here and all the good works that you do. So, that's where we can help start telling those stories along the way, and you're giving us another opportunity and another voice to do that throughout. Um, like, I was on your website and I just fell in love with the radio shows that you guys do. I just think that's so awesome. I would love to, you know, see, see something like that, get a little attention, and the, the nurse's closet is a fantastic, um, idea. And I just, I think you've got a lot of really cool things that you guys are doing that people in, around you need to know about, you know?
So, I got another question. Uh, when it comes to vendors in general terms, would we be solely relying on your contacts, or would there be opportunities for us to bring to the table people that we would like to use, and we work with that, or because we signed a contract with you, we're solely locked into your context, and we have to go through your context?
If there's, you know, I, I think that we would be definitely open to, we know the people that we work with and we know their expertise, so that's what we're gonna bring the good people to the table. If you have somebody of, on your, that you want to, that does printing for you, that you've done a lot of printing with, then certainly we would engage those folks to do that. If you have a designer that you've worked with that you love, we, you know, would certainly be open, they, he, she knows your style, we'll be certainly open to talking to them and helping guide that conversation.
Yeah, same goes for other vendors too, you know, food vendors or the like. We like to keep things local. Uh, we've worked with, uh, Village of La Grange, about shop local and other, uh, neighborhoods throughout Chicago, and the importance of keeping things as local as possible, and we'll strive to do that.
Yeah.
I, I really think it's a, a better idea that if, if they're available, and that's why Supervisor Will could work out a budget.
Yeah.
And have them come by for a, uh, to our committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Where we can sit down and go over the... Where we can sit down and go over this, and that's the only thing on our agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, we could go on and on and on and on.
It was just so short in between.
Right. And we're still just, you know, what your, what the ideas are.
It's the idea phase, right, right, absolutely.
So as far as budgeting goes, I mean, I would suggest we flesh out the ideas we have, and you could then come back and say, well, it's going to cost you 80 grand, 500 thou, you know, kind of, here's our dreams, is that the process, or do we just come and say, here's your $10,000?
No, we want to, we want to reflect what you want to do, what you, what some of your ideas are, and then also we'll bring to the table some of our ideas, and you can go through, you know.
Right, so you all know that, you know, we're going to straddle two budget years in this, and this year we've already beefed up the budget in terms of programs, and in terms of some communications expectations, so that we would have something that go forward, but we can also plan to adjust next year's budget, because that kicks in the first of April, and then the rest of the events, we could budget for that there. So, that's, I mean, but we do need to figure out, and that's why I've got it here, we need to get some idea, and it may not happen until our next committee of the whole, but we really need to figure out how much we want to, how much we want to plan to spend on this whole event.
Yeah.
A series of events, I should say.
Yeah, and you can also look at another way of, you know, you kind of know what your top-line budget point is, and build programming that doesn't exceed that. So if you have a set budget, you could do that, you know, figure that, figure out, okay, we want to spend, I mean, you could spend, like you said, not quite that high at all, but you can spend a reasonable amount, and I don't know what that reason, you, your committee of the whole has to figure out what that reasonable amount is, and we can work within those guidelines and come back to you with line items of how we could best proceed to celebrate the anniversaries.
The other thing I would suggest is that we maybe get two tracks, one is our celebrations, but the other one is an ongoing effort to get our story out, so maybe we could have parallel efforts to where.
And that's what they've been talking about, that we can, you know, promote through the publicity about the things that we're all already doing, and how that impacts everything.
And then, I'm sure they, I was just talking with my friend from NBC today, and she said that they're making an effort to promote communities and townships, and things like that.
And, yeah, that's part of their editorial that they're starting in their afternoon newscast, and they've gone, they just started, they did Cicero, I think that the Village of La Grange is possibly one of them that's coming up. We could, I'm in contact with the person who's doing the, who's selecting those, we could suggest that they, you know, come out to our November celebration, hopefully, you know, don't, don't hit Riverside before we have the chance to tell this story, you know, I want to be kind of in control of, you know, help guide that story to what we want it to be told as, so getting ahead of it, and knowing that we, they have these opportunities, and we may have, or may have these opportunities with NBC, we may have opportunities with the other TV stations, we'll just be able to help tell the story in the way that we want to tell it.
I also can tell you that I have, I have an inside track with the producer of the show that Ana Balabal does on WGN.
She lives here.
She lives here, we know her.
She lives, right, she lives here, and her producer is one of my daughter's best friends.
Natalie, yeah, I was just, yeah, we know Natalie, and we work with them all the time, so, yeah.
She's, she's one of my daughter's best friends.
And I, in my head, I was watching the, the radio show, I'm like, why hasn't, thank God, she hasn't done it yet, because I want to do it for these guys. You know, that would be another, just a part of things, a ways to tell your stories, all these different programmings that you do.
When is the next committee of the whole meeting?
It will be the first, yeah, July 2nd.
July 2nd, okay.
So you would like to see something from us before, like a week or so before?
With the things that I've told you that we're looking to do, where you think that the costs might go in if we did those things that we're talking about, and, or, you know, give us some ideas so that we can try to plan and see between us if we can figure out that we can do all the things that we want to do.
Do we need a decision like, right?
No, we don't need a decision.
Then I, I would be in favor of like, let's take this offline, if you guys want to take this offline, and then at the committee of the whole meeting, we can move forward into planning and working with them, and, you know, I, that's, that's, that's what I would be in favor of, I don't think that we need to do it right here.
She, you kind of gave us a little bit of an idea of what your budget is, now, that was.
That's for this, that's what I have in this year, up until March 31st.
And that would be like an all-including everything?
That, well, yeah, I mean, that would be kind of what we could do preliminarily. Now, there's, there's other things that could be defined as, you know, that really we could use, we can do some budget transfers, or, you know, if, if it's publicity, if it's print, you know, I have other places in the budget.
It'll give us an idea where we can start, and give you some line, you know, we'll give line items for the, of different, with different amounts on it for you. I don't, you know, we, is there, do you do any social media, is that's?
Well, we're, we're doing a little bit of Facebook, we're, we've just started a Facebook page, otherwise, I mean, we just put out a newsletter, but not social media, but Facebook is the only one that we're.
Are they already in summer?
Not yet, it just, it was just delivered today.
And I think that comes out four times a year?
Yeah, I saw that.
Well, we're, that's what we're targeting, so far we've been at two and a half or so.
You can leave that.
I can.
So, and the straddle.
As I said, the, the things that we need help with are the, this November, you know, for the removing the, the time capsule, and then the festival in a year, next September. Those are the main things that we need help with. Some of the service projects that we're going to do, which we haven't, but one of the ideas was to sprinkle sunflower seeds and ragwood and stuff.
Milkweed, whatever.
Milkweed, yeah, we probably don't need, you know, help organizing that, but we may be promoting it.
There might, there might be like, this is kind of like, this is what's going on.
Right, yeah, that's what.
And that would be like what we call for the hyper-local.
Right, and then our speakers event, you know, we were thinking of maybe highlighting the mental health aspect of the townships, and getting, you know, a really good mental health speaker, so Tim is in charge of the mental health board, so he was going to kind of check with the consultant, so we probably don't need to, you know, really help with that, but maybe promoting it.
Right.
Unless you know a really good mental health speaker.
I'm sure we have one in our repertoire or something.
So, you know, because we, we've done speaker events before.
Okay, yeah.
So, you know, as I said, it's the mainly the.
The bigger events, and.
The bigger events, yeah.
And promotion of everything.
And promotion, and also some media relations.
And I was gonna say, moving forward past our anniversaries, I wouldn't mind seeing a yearly maintenance budget kind of thing to our.
For, for media relations and public relations?
Yeah, I mean, you know, once a year, hit the nurse's closet, once a year, just kind of help us keep getting the word out, because we are social services, I mean, that's what we do.
Sure.
And we're not here unless our constituents can find us.
And know about you.
So for us, I mean, as a board, we're in total agreement that outreach is really what our overarching goal is, so some kind of yearly maintenance budget on that.
Right, a plan, a good communications plan.
Okay, great, so what our charge is to do is we'll come up with a scope of work, including the, the ideas for the year-round events, and a separate budget for media relations ongoing. Of course, our first plan will include media relations and everything in there as well, and we'll try to get that to the end of June, so you have it for your meeting. Now, is that a meeting that you'd like us to come to?
Yes.
And, and present?
Yeah, and have a nice dialogue, that way we can get a lot of different ideas, lots of feedback.
That's what we prefer, that?
We won't let you stand up there, though, while I have this conversation.
No, I mean, it's, it's much more informal.
Okay, that's great, and that's July 2nd?
July 2nd, Tuesday's the last.
Sorry, I hope your work going out of town that week.
No, I already have work on the 4th, so, we have a TV, TV interviews, so we're all, it's all fine, it's all good. Well, good, this is exciting.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Very nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet all of you, thank you for the time.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, moving right along. As you know, we've got a lot of things up in the air, lots of plates that I'm spinning, so my report is not terribly formal, but I can tell you, if I haven't already, that the food pantry's been very well blessed in this past month, even though the, the postal service carriers did not deliver on the day when they were supposed to, and last minute the, the local postmaster said, oh, no, we can't deliver it there, you guys can't drop off that day, even though I had somebody here waiting for them. That was the day that we found out, when, when we called. But anyway, but then about almost a week later, that, I think it was the Friday after, three pickup trucks pulled up from North Riverside Public Works, and said, where do you want us to put us all this food? The post office had had them come out, pick it up, we had three truckloads of pickup trucks full of bags of food and boxes and all that, so. So we got that, then you, you heard the, the note, the Riverside Junior Women gave us $900, plus an individual donor gave us $1,000, so the food pantry is, is in good shape. Regarding the time capsule, we have had a way to take a peek, and we know that at least something is in there, and it's intact well enough, so that it appears to be a newspaper of the day that is draped over it, and you can still read what's on there, so, you know, it has to have been pretty well sealed. So whatever's inside the box, we know that there's something there. Had a lot of activity on general assistance and emergency assistance, either inquiries about it, or, you know, people coming in with, well, what do you really do, that kind of thing. I had to run out to Riverside Lawn, had a call from one of the residents there, there's some dead trees that are really on the, on the right-of-way area, so I'm trying to get, the, the fear is that they, some of them may have been victims of the Emerald Ash Bore, so if, in that case, I know you have to take extra precautions in taking it down, so we'll have to see, but before they fall on a house there, I'll have to do something about that. The, what is now being called the CRC, the Community Resource Center, is open and functioning, that is in room three, hours have started, there's some morning hours and some afternoon hours on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and then Saturdays, there's some hours as well. What is in the printed newsletter is, is close, but not quite, because they gave us that, we went to print, and then they changed it slightly, but there will be, they, I know that they've already served somebody, they were all excited, because we actually had somebody inquire about some services, and we were able to report them right next door. So that, that is working out so far, so good. There, there have been some building matters, as, as always happens, I had a phone meeting with the Ripson Group that you just heard from, and that's, I mean, that's kept me pretty busy, but also I'm trying to work out a way for the farmer's market, to, to accept a way that we would do a voucher system, I really want to go with, with using some technology, so nobody has to be running around anywhere, and we can just electronically get the, the coupons or the vouchers, and then send out checks, but that's still a work in progress. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them, but that's the extent of what we're doing right now.
Can you repeat the part about how we know that there's something in the box?
Okay, so I, I didn't get too far into it, however, we've had the cooperation of both Bill Sherman from the Fire Department, and Rick from Riverside Garage, who did a little investigation, they were able to use a probe camera.
Pinhole.
Pinhole camera, to get in there, they, they made, they, you know, they, they were able to go, get in pretty far, they had a bit drill long enough to open it up, and they were able to peek in, and I do have three pictures here, if you want to take a look at what they gave me, one, I'm really not sure what I'm looking at, but the other two do, do show some, pass that down, do show some, clearly it's newsprint, and it, we're thinking that it's, it almost looks too permanent, too good to be at paper, but it, there's, it looks like it's been well enough sealed, and it looks like that was probably placed there to date the thing, so that at some future date, people would know when it was put in, so it looks like the newspaper of the day. And there's been some examination, we know that there's something metal in there as well, so it appears that it's probably a metal box that is the time capsule, we're not quite sure of its placement, but the cornerstone, even though there's a building almost up to it, should be easy enough to remove for a ceremony, to take out whatever's in there, and to replace on a temporary basis until we put in another capsule. Yes?
Just getting back, we also need to figure out in our anniversary celebration, how we're going to highlight the accessories office.
Yes, absolutely, that's.
So Fran, if you want to come up with, or try to come up with some ideas?
And you're most welcome to join us at that next committee of the whole.
Okay.
Okay, because everybody knows you, and what you, the services that you provide are great.
Are just invaluable.
Absolutely, I mean, even yesterday at the, the Mayor's Golf Outing, and North Riverside Scholarship Golf Outing, I was introduced to somebody who's a new member of a local board, and they said, oh, I've been in your building on the third floor for help there, so. That's about all I have to report at this time, everything else is a work in progress. Okay, moving right along, trustees, Tom, do you, let me go this way for a change, Tom, do you have anything to report to?
Yeah, I've been working on the food bank and the hunger issue in, in the township, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Wilt for her efforts with hooking up with the farmer's market, they've been a little recalcitrant to get too involved, but I have been in contact with the Riverside Presbyterian Church, who's now doing a little food pantry with their fresh produce, the community garden finally got up and running, and they, they're interested in helping out, so there's this coalition that's brewing of like-minded groups in town that would come together to help address the, the hunger issue in, in the township, so I'm meeting with the woman from the Presbyterian Church on Friday to talk about, you know, just some mutual signage, and, you know, how we can start working together. I think by the end of the summer, we'll have a much more clear picture of how these disparate groups can come together to, to help each other out, you know, we all have the same mission, so we might as well pool our resources. I am awaiting Ron from the Parks and Rec to call me back, to see if we can't figure out a solution, a workaround to the farmer's market problem, and if we can, then we'd be putting vouchers in the bag, so they could go to the farmer's market and purchase, you know, $10, $15, whatever it would be, of some fresh food stuffs. I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Tim, come on.
Hi, the Mental Health Board, we're going to have a strategic planning meeting tomorrow evening, to go over some of the programs that we're going to sponsor for the coming year. As Supervisor Wilt has said, the Community Resource Center is open, we're going to put a blast out June 19th, because we do have some things to cover in our meeting, little different things that have to be addressed before we can announce it, you know, a grand opening type of thing. We were thrilled to have one person already come and use it, and I'm looking forward to this, I really am, I think this is something, the community needs assessment that we did was, this is one of the things that residents wanted, I was at a, on Saturday, at a lemonade stand, believe it or not, on Lawton Road, and I was talking to the lady there, and she stated that this is a great, great, great idea, after I told her about it, so I said, yeah, make sure you read your newsletter, get on the township website, gave her my card, said, call me if you have any questions, so I'm pretty excited about it, and.
That's why you should be.
We'll, we'll see, we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens with it, and I'll have more for you in next month.
Very good, thank you. Trustee Clark? Trustee Clark?
Seniors are going well with the exercise class. Tomorrow is our senior drop-in for lunch, which is going to be a baby shower for the exercise instructor.
Okay, anything else? And you've got the working bikes all set for Saturday there?
Yes, I will reconfirm with them.
Okay, thank you. And Mike?
No report.
Okay. Thank you all, and then let's move on to new business. And the first order under there is to enact the annual prevailing wage ordinance. You have it in your packet, and you have all the supplementary material that goes with that, including the...what the prevailing wages are. So may I make a motion that we adopt the Prevailing Wage Act? I have a motion by Trustee Clark...
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Highlandbach to adopt the Prevailing Wage Act ordinance. Is there any discussion? Then hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, and the record will reflect that it was unanimous. Thank you. Proposal...yes. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I thought I heard...there was one abstention. It was not unanimous. There was one abstention. Okay, because this is a...the next thing is the repairs for the Town Hall gutter and downspout. Since this is kind of a bigger bill, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it before I just have to do the go-ahead for having this done. This is a...this came recommended by folks who have done our roof and all, and it will just require the second and third page, our documentation, that we'll have to present to the village. But since it's just replacing existing for existing, that should not be an issue. I was assured that it should not have to go before the Preservation Committee or anything. So that's there for your approval. It's amazing what a little bit of copper and what a raccoon can do.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve this proposal for the Town Hall gutter and downspout repairs. Actually, it's an emergency repair.
Yeah. I have a motion to approve the repairs to the gutter and downspout, and a second by Trustee Lubfer. Any discussion? Then all in...I'm sorry, it's an expenditure, so...trust...Clark Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dratcham?
Yes.
Trustee Hallbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lubfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'm presenting to you, and you...I know this is a lot to take in, so if you want to defer this to another time, but I want you to have the information to look it over. Little...I don't anticipate doing this full project all at once. There are some needs for painting and such before we do this, but each...in each case, in each little block where it says window number and name, that usually refers to where that this is, included in these proposals are the little blinds for this room, which don't do much as they are, but we could get better, because on a sunny day, that those don't help at all in here for the movies. But know that this is...this is one proposal. We have reached out so far to, I believe, four different companies, and this is the only one that's responded. So if any of you have any connections in the window treatment business, please let me know, because nobody else...and that's...anybody who advertises on TV that you hear about, including a local business that they used to be in Cicerone, is now in, I believe, Countryside, and even they haven't responded, so maybe it's too...
What is the number two?
I'm sorry?
There's two bids here.
Well, the two bids are because there's...the only difference really is in the auditorium ones.
Right.
The first set is the double roller, which I think is the way to go, which would both provide a screen, a translucent blind, and also the translucent would be enough fabric to help with the sound in there, but it would also have blackout blinds for other events when we need a daytime thing, but you want to project something or whatever. The other is slightly less, because it's a single roller, but it would be a room darkening, and I don't think that that's the way to go.
So do you make a motion on this, or...
I mean, this is for information. I mean, I would love to start this step by step. I would like to start doing these improvements to the Town Hall. So I mean, if you think that...like I said, we've tried, and we've called repeatedly. We've reached out by email, and we've gotten no response from any other companies. This person was...really seemed to know her stuff, you know, came by, she measured immediately, gave us samples of various kinds of fabrics, and I mean, if in principle, you'd like to approve this, and then we can go step by step through the building, then I would probably start, if anything, with the office in this room, and then work towards the auditorium, which is going to be a bigger project, and we need to figure out a time. I'd like to paint the auditorium before we do that, too, or fix some of the plaster. By the way, take a look in the front stairwell. There was a bulge that part of it was from this, but part was...had been there for quite a while, and they've done a lovely job with the front wall near the window, between the AED and the window. So I would go with this company again, for sure. And I do have bids for that as well, but like I said, right now, I don't see it happening before next month.
Okay. Can we maybe see if maybe you can get another estimate?
Yeah, I'm going to keep trying. I know, I don't like to work from a single estimate.
And then we can deal with this next month, then?
Right, absolutely. But again, sometimes I don't want things sprung on you within 24 hours, and then you're making a decision.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So we'll defer, and then we've got...this is just for your information. Again, we've presented this before, but this is the kind of voucher that we've done before for the farmer's market. If we go with, you know, I'm thinking that it could work well if I do a little orientation with all the vendors, explain what they need to do, give them written instructions on what they would do, and then they could photograph each voucher that they take. They're all numbered, and then they could either text or email them to us, and we could send out their money right away. It wouldn't have to be terribly complicated. So that's just informational, and I will work that out.
Yeah, I think the numbers here, the amount, the percentage of use that were redeemed is...shows us that there's value in doing this.
Right.
If only 10% were being redeemed, it wouldn't...
Right, no, but it was about 40, as I recall.
Yeah, I mean, there was 67 vouchers redeemed out of 110, so...
Right.
Over 60%.
About 50, yeah, yeah.
That's a good participation rate.
Yes. Okay, so I'm going to work on that for the future, and then since we've got a lot of things going on, and it's short, but does...do we need to get any apparel for the Fourth of July and/or perhaps start promoting the anniversaries with having 150th year of Riverside Township or something like that in shirts? Visors have been mentioned, anything like that?
Visors.
And if so, I'd like to see how much you think...I mean, we could...I could give you choices, like we did last time, if we had a budget for how much per person.
I would love to see, I think this was...this was my idea, I'd love to see a one polo shirt per person, because, and I say that because, you know, Fourth of July is in three weeks, now you...or, you know, about three weeks. Then we have this lady, she's going to come, and she's going to possibly put a logo together for the 150th, whatever.
Or a slogan.
Right, so...but that won't be in time, so that's why just get...
So just go for one?
Yeah.
Do you want a new color this year that we want to go? Do you want to go with a red, or a tan, or anything special, you know, green?
I liked...personally, I liked it when we had the option of what...because different people like different styles. I mean, you know, if you like a cotton or a more of a sport shirt that I have, or whatever, you know, but I'd just say one per person, so you can all wear it for the Fourth of July, and at least it has the 150th something...it says 150 years on it, so it creates awareness. That's my thing.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
What are your thoughts?
I'll go two visors, I mean. In those cars, it gets hot.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think we should all have this.
Didn't we all get at least one blue?
Blue.
Last time, we got one.
There we are. Very nicely done.
Yeah. I know, I wound up with all blue, because I didn't know which fabric I liked better.
I think I have a white, a black, and a blue, because we got three last time. But I would be willing to go with red.
Okay.
I would have those red ones you got with the flags on.
Yeah, we had a flag. You know, since the 150th anniversary is until 2020, right? We're in 2019.
Right.
Think we can...
We can hold off on that until, right?
Well, that would be my thing, but this is my...
No, I just thought it because we're going to be starting with the event coming up, so, you know, and rather than...it was my idea to have something for the Fourth of July, so we're creating an awareness-type thing. But it doesn't...that's fine. I mean, but this late stage, it is a late stage in the game, so I mean, I don't, you know, plus we have a lot of stuff going on with this, so it's kind of like, you know, it could potentially be seen as like a little waste here, because, you know, we may have a different slogan or something else, and then you can just toss the shirt, because I mean, what purpose to make, so...
What if we got red shirts that say Riverside Township with the flag, the American flag underneath?
Would you like that? Could probably get that very quickly. Just give me your sizes before you leave tonight. We'll get a red, we'll have Riverside Township, the flag embroidered, and...
I don't know where you got the shirts before, but I...
Flansend.
I went to North Riverside, there's a place in North Riverside, that I got the shirts for the old board with the...
Oh, okay.
With the flag, and they were able to do them very quickly.
Okay.
I still have lengths, so I don't have to get another one.
You got a red one with a flag in Riverside Township?
Unless the flag's going to be different. If it's going to be the same one, why should I get another shirt?
This one's going to have 43 stars in it.
There might be a different shade of red or something.
Yeah, you might want it to stay consistent.
Depends on the two of us.
Right, reds can vary a lot.
I mean, wherever, you know, Flansend can do that, and we're...
Where'd you get...yeah, where did you go before?
It was on...it was in North Riverside, and it was on 22nd Street.
Scola?
Yes, I think that was it.
Okay, I could check with...
It's on Ogden and Brookfield.
Yeah, there's...yeah, there's places all around. I'll try to do something quick, but get me your sizes before you leave tonight. Okay?
Okay. So is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
A large slim, please?
I'm sorry, what was it?
A large slim.
Don't put that in.
Yeah, no, just, please, just write it on my pad.
Just one more. Did we change the date of our...from November 3rd to November 19?
No, I would probably hesitate. So the cornerstone actually says the 10th, as I emailed you. However, I think that we start risking bad weather the later we go in the year. I think that that first weekend is absolutely close enough.
Okay.
That would be my opinion. Jot down your name and your size, and we'll go from there. Okay, any other questions on that? All right, then, just FYI, just a reminder that this Saturday is our shred-a-thon and bike donation drive. We have it in the newsletter, which dropped today, the post office. Hopefully, it'll get to most of the homes right away, but, you know, we did the best we could. We got it...we sent it to the printer last...early last week, and so that's where we are. So please remember, wear some of your township shirts. Please be there. We'll have an informational table with some...featuring some of the things that we do, and if you have any thoughts on what else we should be doing there besides this, let me know. It's...we're down and run, it's just a few days away.
What time do you want us there, Supervisor?
Probably noon is fine, if you could be there noon, 12:30, that should be fine.
Should we bring folding chairs, if you'd like?
That'd be great, yeah, that'd be great. I don't usually sit much for something like this, but...
It depends what shirts you're going to get.
Okay, good.
Either one or two.
Very good. All right, any other questions on that? Independence Day parades, we're signed up for all of them. You have information in your binders about the time of the lineups for Riverside and North Riverside and Brookfield as well. We have not gotten, you know, it's too far out to have any numbers as to where we'll be, but you know where the lineup always is, and we will hustle to the next spot. And then...
Wait, Mike, what are we doing about cars?
Oh, yeah, we can talk about this after meeting, but I'm still...yeah, we'll talk about it after the meeting.
You're working on cars, though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if any of you have any...
It's all taken care of. But we...I think after meeting, we can put a sign-up sheet and figure that all out.
By the way, if you never returned your magnetic sign, we don't have it. If you returned it, we have it.
Did we do that again? Did we forget ours again?
I don't know. We can check the closet, if you want, or I can let you know.
I think, I believe I brought them in. I believe I was the one that didn't return them, and I had Tom's.
Okay.
But I believe that I brought them in.
You brought those in? Okay. We'll double-check, we still have a little while, and we are meeting on the 2nd, so we can shake you down for those. And the...you have also from Via Digiroti, some of the activity. You have the reports that we're tracking on what goes on, and how many impressions and so forth, what kind of traffic there is on the website. Every time we, you know, post something and kind of push it out there, there's a little uptick, and I expect that once the newsletter is in the hands of everybody, we'll have another uptick. Okay, then we are down to the approval of warrants.
Can you see the newsletter? Sure.
It should be in your box, you should have one. Lost it? Okay. Trustee Highlandbach, do I see you ready to...
Ready to roll.
To make the motions? Okay.
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the board authorizes and ratifies the payment of the bills identified on the general warrant in the amount of $18,118.34, as presented to this board on the 11th day of June 2019.
Second, I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, second by Trustee Clark, to approve the general warrant for June 2019 in the amount of $18,118.34. Clark Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dratcham?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lubfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Motion made by Trustee Highlandbach that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for June 2019 in the amount of $1,773.88. The payroll warrant for June 2019 in the amount of $17,300. The payroll warrant for June 2019, in the amount of $17,360.62. The health warrant for June 2019, in the amount of $1,693.58. Grants in June of 2019, in the amount of $12,875. General assist warrant for June 2019, in the amount of $3,690.80. The township radio players warrant for June 2019, in the amount of $200. All above is presented to the board this 11th day of June 2019.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Very good, I have a motion by trustee Hylandbach, second by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,773.88. Payroll warrant in the amount of $17,360.62. Health warrant in the amount of $1,693.58. Grants warrant in the amount of $12,875. General assistance warrant in the amount of $3,690.80. Township radio players warrant in the amount of $200, and that is all. Clerk Blau, would you call the roll?
Trustee Lubfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Dratche?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. There's no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Clark, second by trustee Lubfer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Okay, so...